One, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. We have a lot of unusual things going on in our world, but we can at least still celebrate Saint Patrick's Day. We couldn't have a parade, but I can wish you all the merry green today. And we'll go ahead and start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, meeting documents are available for your review today down next to Commissioner Heiburger. A reminder to silence your cellphone. And Craig is here if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from March 10th, 2020.
Move to approve, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $3,515,742.68.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are a number of reports there. We have register of deeds, statement of revenue, the public defender advisory board minutes, and then we have the auditor's financial report for today, for February. Good morning, Vicki.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the auditor's office, here with the February financial reports, starting off with the general fund cash balance, sitting at $10,532,000. 1.8 and 1/2 million up over last year, and we'll spend that down for sure when, through April, when we see that property tax come in. The highway fund cash balance, $11,466,000, about $455,000 up over last year. And then total expenditures, sitting at $11,331,000, even with last year as far as percent of budget. Personnel expenses, $8,279,608, a little under budget from last year, 18.7%. And then other expenses at $3,052,000, just slightly up over last year at 15.3% of budget. Onto total, or to revenues, total revenue at $3,498,000, just slightly under last year, 5.5% of budget. And then taxes, year-to-date taxes, $1,647,000, 3.5% of budget, and other revenues at 1.8 and 1/2 million, 10.9% of budget. So, on track? Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. That takes us to personnel actions, or no, that takes us to the auditor's office countywide financial reports for 2019. Hi, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. And presented to you today is the 2019 annual report, which will be the published document summarizing financial results for 2019. A couple items I'd just like to point out for your reference. We started the year 2019 with total fund balances countywide of $64.9 million. You'll see that just on the very first row of this statement. Through the year, the county had $88 million in revenue and $110 million in expenditures. So, our fund balances declined by $29 million. That was due almost entirely to our capital projects fund, where we, we had bond proceeds that were spent on the construction of the jail expansion, and that was a $25 million expense for the year. So, that's really what drove the reduction in our fund balances. We ended the year with fund balances just over $43 million as a result of that. If you exclude the capital projects fund, our fund balances actually increased by $4.3 I also provided another statement, just giving you some statistics on, some data on how we performed against our budget. And you can see that our revenues were 3.8 million ahead of better-than-budget. That was due primarily to three factors. Our bank franchise tax was significantly higher in 2019. We had board of prisoners fees resulting from the opening of the fifth-floor addition to the jail that allowed us to house inmates from Lincoln County. And then we had significant grant revenue for the year as well. Our expenditures were also below budget by about $3 million, primarily, a million dollars of that was in salaries and benefits, and then another 1.9 million in other operating expenses. I would point out that next week, we will be having a budget hearing to consider carryover supplements. And so, we are proposing that we carry over $760,000 in projects from 2019 to 2020. So, that will be using some of this expenditure savings if we proceed with that.
Questions for Kim? Commissioner Benega.
Kim, just one question. The 760, how does that compare to last year's carryovers?
Carryovers, it's actually less, by about 200,000. The difference being that in 2019, we had a large carryover supplement for the Tyler project, the software implementation. And now that that's been completed, our, as a result, our carryovers are down a little bit as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim? Great result, all that's good news, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to personnel actions. I consider a motion to approve the routine commercial personnel actions.
So, move, second.
Motion in a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to abatements for approval. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Take these in a couple of different chunks here.
Yep, Chris Lilla equalization. Yeah, items A through D are elderly freeze. These parcels were initiated through the treasurer's office. I've reviewed them, I have no reason to, to not recommend them. Item A is parcel number 60662 for a property tax reduction of $579.87. Parcel B, or, item B is parcel 46572 with a property tax reduction of $635.23. Item C is parcel number 44541 with a property tax reduction of $336.99. Item D is a parcel 5096 with a property tax reduction of $585.05.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve, motion to approve A through D.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Heiburger?
Here's a veteran's exemption that came into our office, parcel number 88944.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
The veteran is service-connected and qualifies for the veteran's exemption.
Thank you. So, next item is notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none.
We're requesting an abatement in the amount of $1,528.55.
So, that takes us to public comment.
This is for the 2019 property tax due and payable in 2020.
If there's someone here who'd like to speak during public comment. Good morning, Jason. Thank you for coming.
Would make a motion to approve items E through H, second.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I was just gonna give a brief update on what's going on right now with the coronavirus.
Motion in a second, any questions? Did we read them all?
I didn't read them.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, I was trying to-
So, Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County have joined, opened up a joint emergency operations center.
I was gonna hold off on the other three since they're one parcel, three years.
I'd make a motion to approve item E.
That includes Sioux Falls Fire, Sioux Falls Police, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office,
I like the quick way myself.
You'd like me to read the rest, I sort of-
emergency management, and healthcare system, among some other city organizations.
I think, I think we can handle them all at one time.
Okay, all right. So, item F is parcel number 43700, is for the 2017 pay 18.
And what that does is allows us to, that even flow of communication, so we're delivering
Amount of abatement requested is $1,521.19.
the same message throughout, throughout the county and city and the area.
Item G is the same parcel, but for 2018 pay 19.
So, specific to Minnehaha County, we've been working with some of the, the other towns
Property tax amount of $1,508.02. Item H is again the same parcel number, but for 2019 pay 20 in the amount of $2,292.84.
like Del Rapids, you know, getting that organization ready and what happens if it hits one of
Okay, so we had a motion to approve E through H, and we had a second.
the smaller communities, which it has Hartford already. And, and due to the school closings, some of the things that the sheriff's office has
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
been doing is assisting with delivering the meals to the kids that are out of school.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote, thank you.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Sioux Falls has a similar program, however, they have a pickup point. The hospitals, for example, you know, they're on high alert right now, and that's filtering out to the rural communities as most of them are Sanford or Aveira affiliated. So, you know, their policies and procedures are in place. As of yesterday, at 1:00, and we'll get another briefing today around noon to 1:00 from the governor's office, there were 10, 10 cases, and three or four are in Minnehaha County. I don't need to go over the, the social distancing, we can see that right in here pretty, pretty well, I think. Some of the things that, specific, the city has closed numerous buildings, the aquatic center, so forth, limiting meetings, that's some of the things I've done personally at emergency management, because we do hold a lot of meetings out there. So, we've suspended those unless they're necessary for public safety. Our reserve program, for example, they're not doing any more ride-alongs, we're saving that resource in case we should need some assistance in maybe mobile, mobile testing areas, like using the fairgrounds, for example, to bring people in and mobile test. I believe Rapid City, Pennington County is doing something like this right now. That hasn't been discussed in depth in the EOC meetings yet, but there is that possibility. So, we're preparing for that. And we'll use the, the reserves as a resort to assist local law enforcement in that way. What we're trying to do, and what the ultimate goal is, is just to slow the process down, to maintain our essential functions, the hospitals, law enforcement, fire, ambulance. So, obviously, my office is working with rural fire and getting them information, and you know, a lot of the rural fires associated with Sioux Falls Fire, and they have some pretty, pretty good policies in place. School districts are still closed. 211 helps line has, has been great again in this, and they're answering calls and, you know, putting out information as, as needed that way. Red Cross is also involved in the emergency operations center in case there's a need for some type of sheltering, which we're not anticipating yet. Other than that, if you guys have any specific questions, I can kind of take them now.
Commissioner Barth?
Where are we at with testing in Minnehaha County? Are tests available? Are they being done? What about drive-through testing?
We, we, like I mentioned earlier, Pennington County, and I heard this on the news this morning, I believe, that they're doing some drive-through testing. And that's what we may plan for if, if the need arises. And I've talked to the, the fairgrounds already about utilizing their open spaces there as they've kind of shut the things down out there and allowed, not allowed the big groups out there. So, that plan is in place if we need it. It'd be similar to what we did in the past, maybe with the mass vaccinations. Obviously, we're nowhere near a vaccination yet, but that's what we're looking into.
And I think there's, I mean, I think the hospitals have actually also are working on setting up their own drive-through. Now, the process isn't complete yet, but it's in, in motion, and they have, my understanding is that they each have locations that are part of their campuses that they're looking to use, so.
For example, yesterday, when I was in one of the meetings, the police chief was advised that, you know, if you're gonna, you know, many of the cops go into the hospitals to eat or to grab a cup of coffee or something like that. So, they were preparing them to, you know, maybe stay out of the hospital or get prepared to be screened as you're going in. So, they're doing some pretty stringent screening, just to even get into a healthcare facility. And obviously, all the unnecessary medical treatments and surgeries are, are shut down for now.
Commissioner Benega.
I say this with tongue-in-cheek as a personal privilege, if I might, but anyway, there's, yesterday, we packaged at my office 21,000 meals to be sent to home-delivered people. We delivered about half of those, so we still have half left that we would, more than happy to distribute those to anybody that has a need. And I know you get contacted, we get contacted, but we wanted to stay ahead of the game.
I know there's some organizations that are kind of stepping up with that, and Del Rapids, for example, they've really taken a lead on it up there, and they're gonna have a website that allows people to, to like, order what they need, and people will deliver it to them, the community groups up there, and the churches have gotten together, so they'll deliver what's needed medications. And that's generally for the vulnerable population.
Anything else? I know there's been a lot of information that's put out, we really, I know you were planning for flooding. Thankfully, we don't have floods today, and that, but we appreciate all the hard work that you've been working on here to try to coordinate these efforts and, and all the folks that are working very hard to, you know, stay ahead of this, as you said, try to flatten the curve. We've been doing a lot of work here in the county as well, and, you know, this meeting, I think we're gonna do better to try to keep the attendance down in these meetings so that we can, you know, comply with the new guidance that came out just yesterday, try to, try to really limit the size of groups that get together. But there's a lot to think through, and I, I really sympathize with all the people who are trying to figure out how to operate their businesses and operate their lives, kind of in what is likely to be just the beginning of a, a long process that we are all gonna work through, but I'm really confident that we're all gonna get through it together. And it's, it is, in times like this, so encouraging to see organizations like Active Generations, and I know there's some businesses in town that are, that restaurants that are offering lunches to students that aren't able to get them at school this week, and, and those kind of things are what really keep us going in tough times like this. But I do really appreciate the work that you're doing personally, and the sheriff's office has been doing and leading this effort. So, thank you for coming this morning.
I'm sure I missed something, but what I, what I will be doing in the future specifically for the commission board is, you'll be getting some updated briefings, probably after the 1:00 or the 9:00 AM, and I'll email them out to you. And that way, you'll kind of have an overview of what's going on and, and help you make your decisions, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else for public comment this morning? Okay, seeing none. It takes us to regular business. First item in regular business is to consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit 20-08 to expand an existing amusement and recreational facility to allow a roller coaster. David Heinhold, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner David Heinhold, County Planning Department. So, Josh Nelson, 46594, 268th Street, appealed the decision of conditional use permit 20-08 to expand an existing amusement park and recreation facility to allow a roller coaster. And this property is located on 26767, 466th Avenue. It's about three miles west of the city of Sioux Falls, and it's right on the county highways. You can see the property is outlined in red. It's about, so, Mr. Nelson submitted a letter stating concerns regarding the conditional use permit, particularly regarding noise for the proposed facility. A copy of that letter has been provided to you, as well as the petitioner's information, which submitted additional information regarding that particular concern regarding noise. There's also a copy of the minutes from the February 24th meeting of the planning commission, some of the, the concerns from the residents that showed up to that meeting as well. And so, in addition to that, the zoning ordinance requires that we send out a notice to all the property owners within 500 feet of this public hearing, and that was sent out on March 3rd for this, this meeting today. The planning commission voted unanimously to approve the conditional use permit request, and I have a few images for the site plan, just going through those briefly. The proposed roller coaster that is included with this request is, would be located, so you can kind of see on the, the image there, there's a greenish color there, it's, that's the wave pool, it's just south of that, and you also see the, the pond there, which would be right in between the, the location of the roller coaster would be. And then the, the water slides are off to the, the northeast of that picture, north is up in that. So, this is the project image that the applicant provided. As you can see, it's 113 feet tall at its tallest point, with other images in there. Some of the pictures that I took for the planning commission meeting, this is from the, the view of the water slide tower. This is the, not the highest point, but the lower point, looking straight at where that would be. And then this is looking from the top, as you can see, the pond is off to the, the background of that image, and the, the umbrella is where the wave pool is, and it would be right in between there, is where the roller coaster would go. So, the, this is just a view from the entrance to the amusement park. You can see the water slides there in the tower where I was standing in the previous images. The, the applicant does have existing parking lots there that consist of asphalt and gravel and, and grass area under the snow there, but, and this, the highway is off to the right of this image. There's the highway off to the right. And this is looking from one of the images, just to show that perspective, from the parking lot area and the grass that I just showed. This is from the main entrance, there's only one entrance to facility, the sign is right there, you can see the, the water tower, or the water slide tower. And this is just the parking area that's along the highway, that's mainly gravel, next to that asphalt area. This is the, the county highway, and as you can see, there's turn lanes there. Off in the distance is the, the intersection of 267th Street and the county highway with, there's a gas station there at the intersection. And then this is just looking south back towards what would be Lincoln County. You can see some of the businesses off to the right, there's a couple of commercial businesses that have been permitted over the past couple of years, which, one of the, the properties that the appellant owns. And then off to the left of that image is Country Acres. This just shows the view of Country Acres. It's one of the residents who showed up to the planning commission meeting, lives along the highway there. And I took a little bit of a back step into Country Acres to show, you can kind of see the, the water slide tower there, it's just faint, awfully faint in the distance, just above the tree line. And then this is looking from what would be Lincoln County line along the, the county highway, and you can see the tower behind the trees there. And that is all the pictures that I have. I will answer any questions if you, if you have them, but this is a public hearing, so public testimony and discussion, county commission may approve, deny, or amend the conditional use permit request.
Commissioner Karski.
Just curious, on the original zoning of this property or the conditional use permit, what was permitted at that time? Why wouldn't have this been considered as part of that at that point?
So, it's a good question. So, a lot of different uses were, have taken place over the last 30, 40 years, and there's been a go-kart track, there's been an amphitheater that was just recently added as part of one of the conditional use permit requests. They've added water slides to the, the use with building permits over time, the, kind of the bull structure where I was standing on top of that tower. So, a lot of stuff has, and there's also like, shot, or like a shooting range type thing? Trap shooting, can't think of the word, thank you. But those are just some of the things that occur within the, the amusement park and, or recreation facility is what the zoning ordinance defines it as. No.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
David, isn't, isn't this mainly a grandfathered thing anyway? I mean, what's the overall zoning? It's not commercial, is it?
There has been conditional use permit requests for the past 40 years.
Other questions for David? Okay, so this is a public hearing, so if the proponent is here, this is your opportunity to speak. This is the proponent, the person in favor. Nobody, nobody's here? Oh, good morning. You'd identify yourself, your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Francis Phillips, General Manager of Wild Water West, 1700 South Carter Place, Sioux Falls. I understood there was an issue, a potential issue with decibel level readings as it pertains to our proposed coaster. Initially, the, the site location is basically right in the center of our facility, of our, of our property, and that site was chosen for a couple of different reasons. Number one, to make sure that we didn't put it on the fringes of the property, so it wouldn't be obtrusive in any way. And number two, it fits with the model and our expansion plans. I can say that we had our manufacturer, and I think you have those reports to view, but our manufacturer of this particular coaster did a decibel level reading analytic at this exact cookie cutter coaster at a facility in California. And it came back on the actual coaster, it depends on where you're standing, you know, within 10 feet of this coaster, it came back anywhere from 75 to 91 decibel level reading. As you move around every 100 feet that you go, of course, the decibel levels will drop. Our property line to the south of us, at that, there's a, there's kind of a dike at our south property, it's a little better than 800 feet away, just to the edge of our property line. So, the analytics show that the decibel level reading would drop to somewhere in the mid 40s. Now, of course, there's some variables involved with that, terrain and whatnot, building structures, and, like I say, all the analytics that would pertain to decibel level readings. But the particular coaster that we're using, that we're going with, is, it's, it's a monorail system, it's not the old-fashioned wood roller coaster where you're hearing metal on metal and clanking and banging. This is really a streamlined coaster. And again, that model was chosen for that reason, easy to maintain, pretty quiet with all things considered. And if you're looking at our property line to the south being 800 feet, like I say, the, the numbers prove that it is well below what we feel is the decibel level threshold, which I believe is 65 decibels. So, if you take that into account, and like I say, that is just to the edge of our property. Then if you go to the property to the south, it depends on how far you want to read, that's another 700, 800 feet from there, from attraction to back door. So, I guess it all depends on how you look at it. But as far as we can tell with the study that we've done, the decibel level reading is far below the mandate, and that's, that's our position.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, let me ask-
There, Barth.
Have you had any other concerns raised by people who didn't complain in writing, or have you had other people call you?
We have had other people call us in favor of this attraction, of course, because it just brings in more, you know, you know, more employees to the park, of course, more business to the west side of town. So, we've had nothing but positive comments as far as we're concerned. So, I've had no other negative input.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here who wanted to speak in favor of this project? Okay, we'll move to the opponents. Is there somebody here who'd like to speak against this? Good morning.
Good morning. Josh Nelson, 204-
So if you take that into account, and like I say, that is just to the edge of our property. Then if you go to the property to the south, it depends on how far you want to read. That's another seven to eight hundred feet from there, uh, from attraction to back door. So I guess it all depends on how you look at it. But, uh, as far as we can tell with the study that we've done, the decibel level reading is far below the mandate, and that's, um, that's our position.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, let me ask you.
Goodbye.
Uh, have you had any other c- uh, concerns raised by people who didn't complain in writing, or have you had other people call you?
We have had other people call us, um, in favor of this, uh, attraction, of course. Cause it just brings in more, you know, uh, you know, more employees to the park, of course. More business to the west side of town, so we've had nothing but positive comments as far as we're concerned. So I've had no other negative input.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wanted to speak in favor of this project? Okay, we'll move to the opponents, is there somebody here who'd like to speak against this? Good morning.
Good morning, uh, Josh Nelson, two oh four Park Drive, on Xcel Dakota, five seven zero three nine. I apologize for having to appeal this as we were actually out of the country when the letter was sent to us the first time, and we kind of saw it on the news one night, and, whoa. I just want to start off by saying I'm not opposed to the roller coaster going up whatsoever, I, I think it's great, and you got to keep business growing and moving forward. When we built our business out there, we'd never really anticipated Wild Water West to turn into, let's call it an amusement park, since we're starting out bigger rides. I know that you have the band shelter out on the north side of the property, um, just some things that are going to possibly create quite a bit more noise. So what I was hoping to do is just request a few things in the form of protections, for our business, since they are starting to do some new types of attractions. Now, as he stated, uh, they did do a test on the roller coaster for the decibel levels. And the roller coaster came back at fifty-four decibels, but does that include the sound system? Any horns, sirens, anything that would be going at the same time as the roller coaster? So for that, we would like to request that there's a sixty decibel max at the property line, which doesn't seem like it would be a real big issue if, if the decibel less level readings are correct. The second thing we were hoping to maybe see was some natural sound screening, such as trees or anything that could grow over time, and possibly help sound and appearance over time from property to property. And the third thing would be is during the construction phase of the project, every Friday and Saturday from three o'clock to five o'clock, we have wedding ceremonies. And w- we were in hopes that a neighborly, neighborly gesture that, uh, maybe they could limit some of the noise at that time. Uh, three, three to five on Fridays and Saturdays, as I don't think anybody would want to ruin somebody's wedding ceremony. We're excited to see the park transform, and we, we know their business model is changing. We just think it would be fair that, uh, they would abide by some of the same rules that us and other new businesses have had that have come into the areas. As far as some stipulations on what they can do.
Thank you, are there questions for Josh? I'm just, I'm curious whether there was any conversation at all with you and Wild Water West before this came forward?
There wasn't.
Commissioner Karski.
Your properties, that building on the, directly on the south side of there, what have you done for your building as far as sound screening or appearance, that type of thing, landscaping?
Uh, we've planted over two hundred trees. We've, we've built a little berm around our pond in the back. Pretty much anything we can afford to do, landscaping, sound screen wise, we do, but we're definitely not at unlimited funds.
Are your trees on the north side of the pond there?
They are, they completely surround it, they're fast growing hybrid willow, they grow ten feet a year to thirteen feet a year, so we're doing everything we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I guess I'm curious whether the Wild Water West has any response to those requests. Okay, thank you, if you wanted to come forward, please.
Is there another opponent?
Oh, I, is there anybody else here who wants to speak against the project?
Sorry, Madam Chair.
No, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Well, you know, as far as the sound goes, you know, Wild Water West has been there for better than forty years. And I believe we've been good neighbors to everybody, and I don't believe the sound is going to be an issue. But it's going to be tough for me during our construction season to put limits on it. I mean, there's lots of factors involved with building a roller coaster, weather being the main one, supply and distribution being another. So to have a crew here putting this together, um, you know, it's basically a puzzle. I mean, there's not going to be a tremendous amount of sound, you know, you, you get your steel put together and it, you know, you're not welding, you're not, you're just, you're bolting this together really. So it's not going to be a tremendous, um, you know, distraction to anybody. But to say that I would have to tell a construction crew to limit their, the, the time that they can put this up, I mean, it's, there's so many factors involved with this, it'd be very difficult to say they couldn't do something between three and five or whatever in any given day. Obviously, we would not plan to work, you know, late in the evenings, of course. This attraction would not extend our hours of operation at all. We would still shut down at eight P M, uh, every day during the operating season, we open from eleven until eight. So it's a very agreeable time for most people. But, uh, but to have a limitation on construction, I think would be very difficult for anybody to, to, to go by. Number two, you know, as far as the sound barrier goes, yeah. I don't think there's going to be a sound issue, but if there ends up being one, he can certainly put a barrier on his property in the direction and the height that they feel would accommodate their business. It's going to be very tough for me to try to accommodate his business on a decibel level that I don't think is going to be a factor. So at the end of the day, if, when this thing is operating, if he wants to have a decibel reading gun out there and, and show that this is an issue, then I think that would warrant an additional discussion. But as far as we're concerned, and as far as the analytics that we've done, this is not going to be a problem.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth.
Do you have contact info for Josh and his wife? Could you call them up, do you know their number? I mean, do they have your number?
Well, I assume everyone has our number, I don't, other than through the petition, I have the number through the petition, I would say, yes.
Madam Chair, I just, uh, I have a memory of us, uh, looking at a dog kennel, okay? And it was kitty corner from a church, and the church asked us not to, uh, let them let the dogs out during services, uh, cause they would be barking. And they came to an agreement that, uh, they would be in touch with each other if, if it needed to happen. And I, I guess I think that there's a, you know, there might not be every Friday night something going on, but maybe occasionally, uh, there's a, a point where you could agree to tone things down and maybe, uh, unload trucks and, and not, uh, bang around too much. I'm just suggesting that, uh, this, if we had better communication, that it could be resolved without any regulation.
Well, I'd be happy to visit with them and keep them informed as far as, you know, loading, unloading, those kind of things. Like I say, you know, I'll certainly do my best. My, my role and my job and my desire is not to be, uh, a thorn for anybody. I came here to manage this park thirty-two years ago, and I think we've been good neighbors. As the area has developed, you know, those that choose to move out to an area next to a water park and amusement park that's steadily grown over thirty years, I think that business has to take into account the neighborhood in which they choose to, to operate.
How long will construction take?
Well, like I say, that's a great question. Um, it'll probably take a couple of months, but it'll be on again, off again, like I say, depending on weather, depending on supply lines, uh, crews, those kinds of things, but it'll start, uh, we'll probably start putting the footings in and, um, you know, we'd like to, provided the commission, we'd like to start putting them in, in April. And, uh, once they're cured, then work the land and then, you know, start to get supplies and start, uh, start construction. And our goal is, uh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Our goal is to be up and running at or before August one.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega.
I think this is for David, if you, uh, if you don't mind. My only question is, uh, the speed limit that I saw on the sign, that, the pictures you took, is there a ordinance about the number of cars coming on and off that highway that affects the speed limit at all?
I think you'd have to ask County Highway Department that question, so there's a county highway. And we don't have any.
I'm sorry.
We don't have any zoning ordinances.
How far from the, uh, entrance of the park is it to where that curve is? It seems like it's.
About a quarter mile? Twelve hundred feet.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Commissioner, I, I think that, uh, we have a number of highway issues coming up, I wonder if he's within earshot someplace lurking.
Jacob is here, but DJ's not here this morning, so. If you want to come forward, that'd be great, thank you.
Jacob Marsh with the Highway Department. So this was an old state highway that we took over a few years ago from the D O T. The, the design for an intersection is based on site distance, and this road was designed for sixty-five miles an hour by the D O T. So that access has been in place long enough where it would have been in the, in the original design. And any new acts, access points that we add today, we look at the speed limit of the roadway and the intersection site distance to make sure that they comply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Karski.
Question for Mr. Nelson, if I could. In your appeal, you're asking for a sixty decibel limit on sound at the property line. Sixty decibels is a normal conversation, from what I've been able to figure out between people. Is there some magic or some reason why you're looking at sixty?
Sixty was just, um, a number that I'd, I'd seen in a few articles, and also Kevin had mentioned some quarries, Kevin with the county had mentioned that some quarries have a sixty decibel level max at the, at the property line. So I, I didn't know if that was a standard exactly, or what, uh, what we would typically see around here. But then as soon as I, I saw the literature on the coaster, it kind of clicked together that it, it might be, so they designed everything to, to fall below that. I, I, I didn't know for sure, honestly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I, I think people should always try to communicate and express their concerns, but I do believe I support this project, and so I'll make a motion to uphold the planning commission decision.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further conversation? Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment, and I will support that motion, and it just that, I think that when this gets up and if you continue to see a problem, I think you come back, you start by talking to Mr. Phillips and see if there's an issue of sixty decibels is normal conversation. And that's at the property line, you're not probably going to hear anything. Um, and I think you just, I think that, that's probably the best way to go at this point, he has done the studies to see what the noise level was, so I will support it.
Anyone else? All right, motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, that takes us to the next item, which is the City of Sioux Falls brief on the twenty twenty census. Good morning.
Good morning.
Very timely, I got my census in the mail yesterday, so.
Excellent transition, thank you. Um, Jeff Schmidt from the City of Sioux Falls Planning Office, starting last Friday on the twelfth, actually Thursday the twelfth, Friday the thirteenth, they started sending out their invitations to complete your census. They will go out between the twelfth and the twentieth. Every household in the United States will receive their invitation to go to my twenty twenty census to complete your census. And I know the majority of the people understand that, and that it would sell one every ten years time to complete your complete count. And the United States Census was very forward thinking in this, that you're doing it online. So they want people to go online to complete their census, you don't need to go anywhere, you're not getting a long form, you go online to complete your census. The reason they're rolling it out between the twelfth and the twentieth is because then people can take their time to get there and they don't bog down the system. It's been working really well. From that standpoint, really why we're doing this again is raising awareness to make sure that people get it completed, and it's very important to get it completed. The United States Census and this ten-year count is the one ten-year count to make sure we know where everybody is located at. This isn't the financial count, this is not a lot of the demographic count, it's finding out where people are geographically located. So from the security standpoint, anytime you get a chance to talk to people, if they have security issues, they've all been addressed, but they're really just looking at who's living in this location so that we know those issues. And that then comes back to, any federal funding is, is this geographic location actually getting the correct federal funding? So in the state of South Dakota, but specifically Minnehaha County, for everybody that gets counted in this geographic location, we get one thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Okay? So for everybody that gets missed, you lose one thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Over ten years, you just lost sixteen thousand dollars. That's Medicaid, Medicare, road and highway funds, SNAP funds, school funding. You lose sixteen thousand dollars for everybody that goes, well, I didn't get it done, I didn't complete my form. I started it, but you just lost out on those funds, and then they come to Minnehaha County and they say, hey, can we get more funding for SNAP, for welfare? And you go, well, there's not enough money in the budget because there's not enough money being represented in this geographic location. It's because we didn't get a geographic count for this location. We need to continue to raise the awareness and say, go online to my census, my twenty twenty census and complete it. It's very simple, they're asking your age, your race, your ethnicity, ethnicity, and where you live. So you put in an address, you complete it, and you're done, very simple. But what their, people forget is when you start to do that, you go, okay, I put in Jeff Schmidt, I put in my spouse, I can't stop, I gotta go, I got my child, my child, my child, you gotta put in everybody. And if people go, well, I put my name in, yeah, but did you put in everybody that lives in your house? Well, no, I didn't think I needed to do it, okay, there you just lost. Well, what about your grandparents, your grandparents? Well, yeah, I didn't think I needed to count them, well, you just lost thirty-two thousand dollars because you missed the two grandparents that live with you. So it's very important to make sure, and again, raising the awareness now, and again, if you have social media, raise that awareness. If you're keeping social distances, you're out there talking to people, bring that up. I was at Active Generations on Friday, went really well, they understand it, they go, well, here's the questions we have, just complete the form. Go online, complete the form, it's in thirteen different languages, so that issue's addressed, secure. So just wanted to, again, bring it up here as well as the viewing public, so any questions, concerns?
Commissioner Karski.
I also received mine, and I completed it on Saturday.
Very easy?
Very easy, just a few minutes. It made me think yesterday, um, though, I called my son up, he owns a home in town and has a roommate.
Yeah.
I said, well, you're going to get that in the mail, and I said, you need to put your roommate on there.
Yes.
I don't want to, I don't, for whatever reason, some social stigma, whatever.
Yeah.
I said, no, you have to, and I explained why, and he said, okay, but, and then I, client calls me up and her twenty-two-year-old daughter just graduated from college, and her and two other young ladies are renting an apartment. So that is going to go to that apartment address, so you're counting on three twenty-two-year-olds, one of those three, to complete it and include.
Everybody that's at that location.
And I think for us as parents and of the younger generation, to help them understand that they need to do that. My, my twenty-eight-year-old son didn't under, our twenty-nine-year-old son didn't understand he needed to do that, so, you know, you're talking to us, but we need to, and people that are listening need to say to their kids that are living, hey, you're going to get this thing at your address. You need, somebody there, so, even if you're just renting, needs to take that and complete it, and everybody that lives there needs to be included. So just, uh, trying to get the word out.
Right, raising that awareness.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I have a similar question, I, I did get mine yesterday, or yesterday, and I completed mine last ti- night and it took less than five minutes. So I'm wondering about snowbirds, people who are in Arizona for the, for the winter, and what if they don't get back till after April first? I visited my parents recently and my father got his in Texas, and I said, don't fill it out in Texas.
And I said, don't fill it out in Texas. You don't live in Texas. Make sure you go home before you complete it. But I'm just wondering how that would work for people who are gone for three months out of the year and to make sure that they're coming back to their home.
Sure. So any of those really specific questions, you can go online and, and kind of walk through the process. But it's where are you living on April first? Or where do you spend the majority of your time? Okay? So college students, and again, this is really different now because college students are transitioning from one to the other. But in general, if you're a college student and for nine months of the year, you were at one of the two colleges in South Dakota, South Dakota State or USC, they needed to say, I was there, not in Sioux Falls, living here. Because the majority of the time, they were living there. So that's how, snowbirds, they're like, well, for seven of the months I was in Phoenix. Well, that's what you need to say is, where were you at the majority of the time? Or if it's just easier, go, well, where was I on April first? Put it down where you were at April first. Military personnel, people that are in group quarters, people that are in jail, all those issues come up and you get very specific. And they're not trying to make it difficult. It just says on the form, where are you at on April first? So.
Commissioner Barth.
So obviously, this isn't the first rodeo for the census operation. And I hope there's some people still working in the federal government that were here last time. But, you know, even with our tax notices, people with dementia, people, whatever, they don't fill it out. They don't answer the door. We've had close to evicting people from the home that their taxes have not been paid on. And they just didn't open their mail. They didn't, uh, and family members have come in to pay their taxes so that they don't get evicted. I expect that anyone with experience doing this knows about these kinds of, of people. And of course, then there's people who, whose legal status in our country may not be clear. And, uh, you know, they may be reluctant to fill it out, but we need those people to fill it out also. You know, my, the three Filipino maids I have at my house should be filling that out. Anyway, I, I had to send them back. But I hope that they remember how to find those people. And I hope every person in Minnehaha County and the state of South Dakota takes this darn seriously. And for those that think it's not the right thing to do, it's in the Constitution of the United States. If you believe in the Second Amendment, you gotta believe in this too. Let's get her done.
So based on that, everybody needs to be counted. There, the immigration deportation question's been removed, so ICE will not use this information from the security standpoint. So if they have those secure, security issues, still take the census because we need to count everybody. As well as family members can help other family members complete the form for you that have done it already. It's very easy. You just complete their name, age. You can complete it for them. As well as any security issues that people may have that go, I don't want the federal government tracking me. I don't want them coming to my home. The best way to address that is to complete it early and get it done. Because when the census goes, this home, this household has never been complete. They'll continue to call you, send you mail and go to your home to try to get that household completed. So once you get it done and yours, your two have already been completed, your household will be checked as completed. They won't do a follow-up. So from a security standpoint, do it early and then you'll be checked off as completed.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for being with us this morning.
Ma'am Chair, one more question. Where do you go to get a job at the census?
Census.gov. So again, huge issue with our area's low unemployment rate. They don't have nearly enough enumerators. That's the counters. So in South Dakota, in these geographic locations, they need seasonal employees that go, okay, there's these households that have never been counted, so they need people that know the geographic locations that can go out there and knock on the doors and say, I have a tablet. Can I help you complete it? But we don't have enough, the federal government doesn't have enough workers. So I've even talked to some parents that have college students that are in school right now that are coming back. Go online to census.gov, get hired. The wages are good. You're a federal employee and you can do seasonal work to get these counts done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you so much. All right. That takes us to item twelve, which is to consider a motion to authorize a transfer of two hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars from the general fund to the emergency management fund. Kim Adamson, good morning.
Good morning. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. This is a routine transfer that's done between the general fund and the emergency management fund to supplement the cash available to operate the emergency management department.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oops. Roll call vote. Sorry.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item thirteen, which is to consider a motion to authorize a transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the twenty-four-seven fund to the capital projects fund and another two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund to the capital projects fund. Kim.
Yes. This fund, this transfer request is made as, as a result of the wrap-up of the capital project estimates for the jail expansion. We've determined that we need to transfer an additional five hundred thousand dollars. The two sources that were identified were the twenty-four-seven fund and the general fund. The sheriff's office has obtained authorization from the attorney general in order to utilize the twenty-four-seven funds. And we're pleased that the transfer amount has come in at the five hundred thousand dollar level as that's significantly below what original projections were. But because of the excellent cost management, we've been able to keep that number pretty low.
Any questions for Kim? I would, I would echo that this is actually really great news. When we originally authorized the scope of this new jail project, we thought this might be three point five million dollars. And we had looked at ways that we could provide that funding out of this budget. So because we've had great success in the construction projects, the project overall has been very well managed by a, a great team that we've had to work with, that this is really fantastic news from my point of view. So. There are no questions. I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to transfer the funds to the capital funds project and to the general fund. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we're gonna take a couple of presentations. First presentation is from the Public Advocates' Office. Julie Hofer, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Hofer from the Public Advocates' Office. In two thousand and nineteen, our office consisted of seven attorneys, two paralegals and two legal office assistants. Actual expenditures for last year were one million sixty-four thousand dollars. We, with that money, we closed a total of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven files and opened two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four. That was up just a couple hundred from the year previous, so not a huge increase, but a small increase. Looking at two thousand and nineteen, I guess three things that we focused on during the year would be efficiency, cost savings and open lines of communication. We, in terms of efficiency and cost savings, the Public Advocates' Office has worked with the court system and all the outside agencies to ensure that our clients have access to resources that they need while working to maintain the department's budget. We regularly utilize the services of Alliance, Carroll Institute, The Arch, The Glory House. The contract with Dr. Flynn is very beneficial in terms of competency evaluations and keeping the cost of those to a minimum. We've attempted to find solutions to the problem of our clients who have been found not competent and are being held at the county jail because the HSC will not take them, saying that they are too full. We've utilized RITSA mandamus, basically forcing HSC to take the person as they're required to under the law. The office has continued to work with the specialty courts in Minnehaha County. Our clients utilize the services of the drug court, the DWI court, the veterans court and now the mental illness court with the hope that that will reduce the rate of recidivism. We've worked to maintain open lines of communication with the state's attorney's office and the attorney general's office and the public defender's office to identify problems that can be solved. I've now started attending monthly meetings with attorneys from all of those offices to discuss concerns and ideas for improvement. I've also started taking all of the controlled substance cases that come into the office. We met with the state's attorney's office and the public defender's office and decided that some of those cases could be quote-unquote "fast-tracked" to get the client services sooner and into treatment sooner. So the client only has the one controlled substance charge instead of three to four, which we often see. We've worked with pre-trial services, court administration, probation, Alliance and the state's attorney's office to identify potential jail inmates that could safely be released into the community. So they're not held at the jail for longer periods of time. We meet twice a month to identify these inmates. Sometimes it's a matter of getting a PR bond. Sometimes it's a matter of moving up court dates. But that meeting goes on every two weeks and the hope is to save the money, the county money and reduce the number of beds being used at the jail. We had the funding last year to allow each attorney to have their own tablet, which is very beneficial. These, these tablets allow the attorney to work in the courtroom while they're waiting for a hearing and to also take them home and work nights and weekends if need be. They were a much-needed addition to the office. In closing, I feel the Public Advocates' Office has a team of very dedicated attorneys. Our caseload is high, but everyone works to make sure that things go smoothly and run efficiently. I'll have my annual report out by the end of the week, but I don't anticipate asking for additional staff or money for other major expenses during the upcoming budget season.
Questions? Commissioner Karski.
One of the things I've struggled with in my three-plus years on the commission is how the public defender, the public advocate and the state's attorney count, how many times or how many people, crimes, files, whatever. So just want to clarify from you, when you say you have so many files, if I'm arrested and charged with DUI and possession and something else, not wearing my seatbelt, how many files is that?
That would be one file.
That would be one file. Okay.
But then if you're arrested the next week and charged with the same thing, that would be a second file.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for your report and for what everybody in your office does every day.
Right. And I want to thank all the commissioners for the support and especially Commissioner Barth. Whenever I have a problem, he is always willing to help out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll pay her later.
Okay. So this takes us to the presentation from the Public Defender's Office. Tracy Smith, good morning.
Good morning. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. Over the last year, as Julie Hofer indicated, when she started off her presentation, our office expenditures for last year were three million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten and our total cases were eight thousand three hundred and thirty cases. And that worked out to be three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents per cost per case. I'm really thankful for the opportunity to be here. I don't know if the commission realized that this week is actually National Public Defense Week in honor of the landmark case in nineteen sixty-three, March eighteenth, which was Gideon versus Wainwright. Our goal is to provide zealous advocacy to anyone that we're appointed to represent. We value compassion, empathy and understanding. Our vision is to ensure that all of our clients receive quality and zealous representation without regard to their economic or social situation and without regard to the nature and accusations against them. The two thousand and nineteen highlights, we've been working with stakeholders to build stronger alternative courts, as Ms. Hofer indicated. We have four alternative courts in Minnehaha County. In January, we just started Mental Health Court, which is staffed by two attorneys in our office. We have Mental Health Court, Veterans Court, Drug Court and DWI Court. We have one attorney from our office who staffs each of those courts as well as a backup attorney. Our, another goal that we've had for
Sorry.
Two hundred, two thousand and nineteen was reducing pre-trial incarceration through pre-trial diversion and setting up treatment alternatives. We've worked with the presiding judge, Judge Hauman, and she staffs each weekly in custody review team, which is a group of stakeholders who meet each week to see which people who are currently in custody can be released on lesser bonds safely within the community with alternatives to incarceration such as electronic monitoring or twenty-four-seven, so that we can reduce our numbers of people who are currently being held in our jail at a reduced cost safely. We've also dedicated staff to allow for expeditious resolution of non-violent low-level cases, as Ms. Hofer talked about there. We call it fast-tracking. And the whole idea for that is to be able to have people who are arrested for drug cases, is one example that she provided. Instead of people racking up numerous drug cases, being arrested over and over and over again because they're using is to, when they have that first drug arrest, to connect them with resources in the community right away, have their case over with so that they don't have three, four, five and six drug cases and then have significant records that preclude them from getting jobs or having, being able to get into school or being able to get into housing because they have all these drug cases. So we've been very fortunate to work with the state's attorney's office and the courts to be able to have that program. We've also continued our community partnerships with a goal toward developing a holistic approach toward mental health advocacy. And that is by continuing our partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health. I talked a little bit already about our alternative courts. Staffing each of these courts, our numbers have shown that in the last year, we dedicate six hundred and seventy-five hours to our alternative courts. And that equated to sixty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-nine thousand of additional services performed by staff within our office. And this is not through funding that we receive from our clients. These are actually non-billable hours. The county doesn't receive any funding from the state for any of these programs, but they do provide a benefit in reducing the number of people who are in custody and by accessing them to resources in order to keep them from committing new crimes. This is pie chart is also shows the total percentage of indigent defense in Minnehaha County and then percentage of services that are provided for two thousand and nineteen. The Public Defender's Office provided sixty-eight percent. The private defense bar provided eight percent and the Public Advocates' Office provided twenty-four percent. And it also breaks down the cost per case for the Public Defender's Office, Public Advocates' Office, and the cost per case when a case has to go to a private attorney. There are sixty-six counties in South Dakota and the billable hour for a case when a private attorney has to be appointed is ninety-eight dollars an hour. The cost benefit when a public defender's office is in place, Pennington County has a public defender's office, Minnehaha County has a public defender's office. This graph shows that with the training, quality of services, supervision and accountability, it's much more economical when a public defender's office is in place and we're able to provide services within, within our office rather than having to appoint private. I've also wanted to show a video. Earlier this year, we had a fundraiser for our alternative sentencing program based on our community partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health. It's my understanding that when Southeastern did their presentation, that they weren't able to play the video. So I wanted to present it here. If we're able to get it to play this time.
I was homeless on the streets, in and out of jail since I was fifteen years old. My addiction was alcohol and methamphetamine. My addiction was alcohol and methamphetamine. I got in trouble with the law, and so that's what kind of led me to the program.
Normally, for us, on controlled substance cases or any drug case, there's no treatment aspect, and a lot of our clients are actually using, just to mask mental health, depression, anxiety, voices, schizophrenia.
They find themselves homeless, they've lost family members, they've lost children, and in one way or another, end up interfacing with the police, get arrested, and have to go through the criminal justice system. And that system isn't designed to deal with mental health, chemical dependency issues. It's meant to just deal with the crime and exact the punishment, it's not meant to cure them.
So, I had Roxanne as a client. She had a drug-related nature, had been to the penitentiary in the past on similar drug-related offenses, and they saw just an escalation, and now it got to violent offenses. And there was an assault that had happened with an alleged weapon, and the State's Attorney was asking for a significant amount of penitentiary time on Roxanne. We had gotten her into treatment, and she did a very lengthy treatment program, and she had gotten out, and we had connected her to Southeastern Behavioral, just to try to show the judge and the State's Attorney that she's not a violent individual. We got all of the documentation from Southeastern of all the work that she was doing, all of the programs she had done between now and then, the treatment, the therapy, the follow-through on everything, and gave the judge a very lengthy record for him to go through. And the judge ended up commending her for everything she had done.
I've been sober for eight months now. I have my own place, I have a job, and I feel like I'm doing great. Mentally, it has helped me with my addiction, it has helped me with my mental illness. I feel like I couldn't have done it without the program.
They really do a lot of good, and so I'm really grateful. If I identify a client with needs, I'm able to put in a referral to the organization and trust that that person will be given every opportunity to have access, to get their medications and continue to take their medications, which is critical in many cases.
It's helped a lot of my clients, I think, for the long run. You know, I do believe that mental health treatment is something a lot of people need, counseling, therapy, drug medication management, and things like that. I don't think that you should just throw someone in a cell and lock away the keys, and Southeastern has been showing, there's other ways to handle a lot of these cases. You know, we can say, "Well, I've had this case in the past, and I've done this in the past, and, you know, this person hasn't been back in a year and a half." So, something's right. Like, we have done something to help that person down the road, and that's what Southeastern's doing, they're addressing these issues in the forefront with us. I think it's changed a lot of my clients, and helped them for the better, and that's something that I'm very appreciative of.
I'm grateful that Southeast was there, because it helped justice in this sense. It helped somebody not serve more time or be incarcerated for longer than they otherwise should have been. And it was only through the grace of working with Southeast that that person was able to get the services. It's important, and there is, there's a great need for it. You don't do what they do to get rich, you do it because you want to help people.
I feel really good having my own place. I've been pretty much homeless since I was 15 years old, and in the past, my home was...
And I wanted to add that it's not just the alternative sentencing program that we have, we have Debbie Faiini, who works through that program, but we also have the Alliance Program through the county that also provides Amber Bartels. I saw an article recently related to the Alliance Program. The Alliance Program has dedicated a worker for our office as well, who is in our office every Wednesday afternoon, and Amber helps with setting up services for housing and treatment in our office. And those, both of those programs have really helped immensely by having the right people performing the right duties, so we really appreciate both of those programs. Just a couple other things I wanted to add. For recruitment within our office, we have, we've had 71 percent of the new attorneys that came to our office in 2019 were former interns, volunteers, or former attorneys. More than 50 percent of the attorneys either graduated from USD, graduated from the University of South Dakota School of Law. We have the Indigent Defense Practicum through the University of South Dakota School of Law, which is an immense help to our attorneys. They do a lot of the legal research, they're certified third-year law students who help with writing briefs, helping with bond arguments, so we really appreciate having them help us each fall. The next slide, you heard both, Julie and I, talk about the fast-tracking program. We saw a 13 percent decrease in the number of cases, methamphetamine cases, that we had last year, and I do believe that is attributable in part to the fast-tracking program that we've started. By getting people access to resources right away, we've been able to reduce the number of people coming back with new charges by helping them to get into services. Finally, looking ahead, our goals are to reduce caseload congestion, reduce reliance on jail, and continue to work with our stakeholders, the courts, and the State's Attorney's Office, to try to find opportunities to ensure that we're being efficient, approving the quality of indigent defense for our clients and the citizens of Minnehaha County. Any questions?
Commissioner Karski?
Same question, Tracy, that I asked of Julie. An individual's arrested, charged with two or three different offenses, how do you count that? And say, a week or two later, they're rearrested and charged with different, how do you count those cases?
We count those based on applications for court-appointed counsel. So at their initial appearance, they fill out an application for court-appointed counsel. If they come in on a failed-to-appear drug case, DWI, and they fill out an application, all of the docket numbers will be on that one application, so that will be one case.
Okay, even if I'm arrested a week later, that would still be back to the original, or would that be a separate one?
So if they're arrested a week later on a new charge and fill out a new application, then that would be a new case, correct?
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
So, do you do a lot of work over the telephone with clients, or do they have to come into your office? I just ask from the perspective of social distancing, or whatever.
Right now, within the last week, we've implemented a lot of social distancing. We're asking clients to make appointments over the phone, and we've been calling those that are already scheduled, and rescheduling those for phone appointments. With the recent issues we've had, and the attempts to distance ourselves, we've been asking attorneys to utilize more of the jail ATM, which is emailing our clients, which is totally confidential and at no cost to our clients, and meeting with clients more on the ICS, the jail visitation center. It's not ideal, hopefully it's only temporary, but it's more so for the safety of our clients and our staff. And we're working with the courts to try to get as many people out of jail as safely as we possibly can.
Other questions? Kind of along those same lines, since the topic came up. I know all department heads and elected officials have been asked to submit plans by noon today of how, kind of different levels of providing services in these times, and how we can limit internet contact, and what would happen if we needed to shut down all contact, or if we shut down a building. So we've got plans in place, and folks are working all of that, so we appreciate, we appreciate all that you and your staff do.
And we're really appreciative of the courts, and the county, and the jail, and the state, everybody's been working really well together, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so that takes us to item 16, is consider a resolution to participate in the South Dakota DOT Bridge Reinspection Program. Jacob, thanks for coming this morning.
Yeah, every year, we participate in this program with the DOT. Federal Highway requires us to inspect all structures every two years, and all reinforced box culverts every four years. So, just ask for a resolution to participate, whereas the state would pay for 80 percent of the consultant's time, and the county would be responsible for 20 percent.
Questions?
Make a motion to have the chair sign this.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to item 17, which is authorize the chair to sign a construction-administration agreement with Infrastructure Design Group for Project MC-17-01, Highway 146 Reconstruction.
Yeah, so this construction-administration agreement is for County Highway 146, which spans 6.91 miles from South Dakota Highway 11, just south of Brandon to the Minnesota We're going to build this in concrete this year. With reconstruction, they're going to be the general contractor, and the completion date for the first phase is June, is November 20th, 2020, and the project needs to be fully complete contractually by June 25th, 2021.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 18, consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a land purchase agreement to acquire right-of-way for Highway Project Number MC-17-10.
So, County Highway 149 would be, this would be Phase Two of it, the north section from Colton down to County Highway 122. This is in our five-year plan to complete, to reconstruct. We're working on getting the right-of-way out of the way now, so we can get utilities and any pre-work that needs to get done, so we can get this constructed without, without having to push it around in our schedule at all. This parcel is for Adrian Krogstad. It's essentially .259 acres, I think it's about 10 feet wide along the front edge of his property on the county road. With the completion of this, we'll be at 18 out of 22 H-lots, 14 out of 15 permanent drainage easements, and 33 out of 40 temporary easements that we need for the project.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I do have a follow-on question, I guess. So where are we at with the remaining parcels that we need to acquire, negotiating?
Yeah, yep, we're currently in negotiations, everybody. We don't see, we don't foresee having any issues, it's just some fine details on some fencing and whatnot.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now this takes us to, we've got a couple items here that are going to address the current situation with coronavirus, and first one is to consider a resolution to designate decision-making authority to the chair regarding emergency policy decisions. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Minnehaha County has put together a coronavirus response committee that has been chaired by Human Resources Director Carrie Dever. As part of some of our meetings that we have had, the situation has come up where you commissioners only meet on Tuesdays for your regularly scheduled meetings, and to hold a special meeting or an emergency meeting does take 24 hours of posting in advance of that meeting to be able to hold that. And a recommendation was made for the committee to develop the resolution that is in front of you, to designate some very specific authority to the chair regarding leave decisions, time or closure of the building, as well as, I guess those are the two issues, it'd just be emergency policy-making decision authorities. So that's the resolution before you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions? I would note that there is a companion to this, the next item that we'll be addressing is going to specifically talk about some leave, changes that we're recommending to leave during this emergency situation, and it is just an opportunity to give us some flexibility that is just needed, and I've said, every single email I've gotten on this situation has the word "fluid" in it, and things change, or have been changing hourly, so that is the reason for this resolution. All right, if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us, as I said, to this companion item, which is to consider a motion to authorize temporary changes to the employee-paid leave benefits effective March 31st, 2020 through May 31st, 2020. Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We're asking for your support on two immediate changes, or actually changes we would like to have been effective backdated to March 13. The intent, of course, is to try and be more responsive to employee needs during this time. The first really focuses on our extended sick leave benefit. You probably recall, that's a benefit we provide for family medical leave qualifying or very serious health conditions. Our request is that we allow employees to use that if they have a COVID-related illness or a serious health condition, as defined by FMLA or influenza, something along those lines, without having to use 24 hours of PTO first. So again, the intent is just to provide them more immediate access to that pool of time. The other recommendation that we have is to allow employees advanced time off, so if their accruals are depleted, if they don't have any additional extended sick leave, or if they need to be gone for a COVID-related issue where they're taking paid time off, we're asking for flexibility to allow them to take a loan out essentially on future accruals, up to 80 hours combined total for those two.
Questions? I would note, there has been a committee that has been pulled together of various department heads who had a lot of input into these proposals, and this is the proposal that came out of that group. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 21, Legislative Update. Craig Dewey.
Good morning again, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Happy St. Patty's Day, the legislature is in recess. There is one day left of the legislature remaining to consider any potential vetoes that the governor issues for bills. There are a couple of new developments that I'd like to bring to your attention that are not included on this legislative update. One is that there was, I'm going to call it, a pot of money that was available that the legislature considered to assign to some different projects through some whiteboard discussions. Thank you to the leadership of Senator Solholt from Minnehaha County. The county was able to secure, or the legislature, rather, appropriated $200,000 that can be put towards, or that will be put towards, the Triage Center for costs related to that. So that is certainly a positive, because that was new money that we were not anticipating. And then, secondly, there are a couple of new developments with bills here that are not included on your update. Senate Bill 144 ended up getting hog-housed really close to the end of the legislative session, and what the change to the bill would indicate is that there was $10 million that would be allocated towards roads, for local roads, and that would be $10 million for county road funding. 5 percent of those funds would need to be passed on to townships for township road repair, given some of the damages that township roads have suffered over the last year with flooding, which you have certainly been aware of. That bill ended up hammering out some differences in conference committee, and is at the governor's desk awaiting signature. The $10 million distribution to counties would be determined by multiple factors, including population of the county, where the dollars would go. Generally, after having conversed with D.J. Boothie, the Minnehaha County Highway Superintendent, he indicated overall that the bill, with all the factors considered in the formula, may benefit smaller counties more than larger counties, but Minnehaha County would still be due hundreds of thousands of dollars as a result of this bill passing. That is the legislative update that I have so far. If you'd like to ask any other questions, I'd be happy to visit with you about that process.
Commissioner Hiberger?
I just have a question about 144, and maybe it's too in the weeds. I know some of our townships have large reserves in their accounts, and I'm just wondering if the commission, since the money comes to us first before townships, if we have any discretion on where those dollars are used for township roads. Some of them have more significant, maybe not Minnehaha County, but some townships have more significant problems than others, and so I'm just wondering if the commission has given any leeway in how those, those dollars are dispersed to townships.
Given that there were changes as the bill went through the process, even after it was hog-housed in conference committee, I'd have to do some further research and circle back with you. back with you about that.
Commissioner Hiberger.
The comment would be just, it would be nice if we would, could send a letter of thank you to Senator Solholt and maybe some of, I don't know if there's others involved, for the money for the triage. Also, a last-minute thing was that 211 was also fully funded and some of those things are super important to the work we do and I think it would be a good gesture if there was some way we could put together a thank you and sign it and so anyway.
In regards to that 211 funding bill, there were some last-minute changes as it went through, I believe, since it was a Senate bill, the last chamber it went through was the House. The House ended up stripping out the full funding for 211 and only, the bill would only provide 50 percent funding. After it went through conference committee, the full funding was put back in to the bill. And in a conversation or text that I exchanged with Commissioner Hiberger, she indicated that Senator Solholt, again, was a real linchpin in making sure that that funding was put back in.
She's certainly been a great advocate for issues that dramatically affect folks in South Dakota and we do appreciate her work. And I think that's a great idea that Commissioner Hiberger has, so we'll try to put something together.
Will do.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, liaison reports. Any liaison reports? I would just report that I have been, I had the opportunity on Friday to meet with this group that's been put together to try to address issues related to COVID-19 here in the committee. I really am very appreciative of all the Minnehaha County employees. We have a really diverse group of employees from the sheriff's department and the jail who are all emergency staff who have to work, you know, 24/7 shifts through all the folks that provide services to the direct public here in the administration building. People have been very willing to think creatively and try, you know, they all want to provide services to the public and we're just thinking through the best way to do that. A press release went out last week to encourage the public and remind the public of a lot of options that there are to get services, to pay your taxes, to get your driver's licenses, plates here. And a lot of that business can be done remotely through the internet, through the telephone, and we just want to take another opportunity to remind folks that you don't have to come down to this building and that we are going to be continuing to take steps to reduce lines, reduce the groups of people that have to get together. We had a lot of people here this morning. I think we won't see as many people in the future as we try to comply with some of the guidance that's out there so that we can all do our part to try to flatten the curve on this, on this virus and keep ourselves and more importantly, our neighbors healthy through this. So Commissioner Karski.
To that point, Commissioner, the county's responsible for making sure that basically for the conduit to the, for the state, for people to get their license plates, to pay their taxes, their registrations, get their marriage licenses, whatever. Some things you just have to come down here, but this morning I heard that, I believe it was Verizon and AT&amp;T were basically giving people a grace period on paying their cellphone bills if they couldn't get them paid. Unless the governor, and maybe this, my point or, point for this is that we should communicate to the governor's office that unless they're willing to, for a period of time, give people some grace period on their vehicle registrations and that type of thing, that we could minimize people having to stand in line and do that type of thing. But I don't know if anybody's asked the governor's office and if she has that type of authority to say that we're not going to cite people for driving with expired tags for a period of time just till we get through this crisis. Just that type of thinking, that out-of-the-box thinking that, you know, we don't want people congregating in our hallways just to pay their vehicle registration because they're worried about getting a ticket. That would go a long ways.
And then just to comment on that, I think that's great. I know we have been looking at different options. We have not directly contacted the governor's office, to my knowledge, but law enforcement, in fact, I think there was a group meeting this morning with Chief Judge Hellman to think about prioritizing what kinds of issues are going to result in arrests and what might not during this time period. But we will be reaching out to the governor's office as well to try to get some clarity on some of those issues. Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, I'm sure we all got a letter today as, on the issue that Commissioner Karski just mentioned about not ticketing people with expired plates, et cetera. And certainly that's an issue, but so much of our work can be done over the phone. And I know that the treasurer's office has issues answering the phone. And instead of servicing the mob at the line, and hopefully there is no mob, people should stay six feet apart, they should answer the phone and help people that way. You mentioned previously in a, in a letter that people can go to kiosks and it's been suggested that they are germy, but standing in that line is germy. And I'm glad we're all sitting a few feet apart, especially far apart from Gerald here. But let's, let's answer the phone. Let's take care of our citizens remotely. Let's keep that distance whenever possible and every department can do better at that.
Commissioner Hiberger.
I'm just going to reiterate what Jeff said because I was going to say it too. As far as the kiosks, if you just need a sticker for your license plate, don't come down here. Go to a kiosk. Take your Clorox, wipe and wipe it off if you don't want to touch it, but go to a kiosk. Do not come to our building and stand in line.
Or else wipe your hands off with, after using it.
Or both.
Before you pick your nose.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, so that takes us to new business. Any new business? Any old business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I made no comment during the bills today, but there is a bill that we approved today for $696, which was my expenses going to Washington DC and for the NACO conference and I wanted to mention it.
Okay, thank you. All right, no other old business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you everyone for coming this morning.
Carol.